Okay, are we, is Ben, is Ben hooked up? He's there. Okay, we're back in an open session under item 6C. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this issue?
Our motion will be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please vote. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Collins votes yes. Could he hear the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion, well, I voted about three times. Okay.
Yeah. Don't feel bad.
Okay, and the motion passes with Ben's unanimously. Six oh. Okay, we'll move to the next item, which invites public testimony. First of all, an ordinance on action and ordinance enabling Section A 20.03.002, Code of Ordinances to Align Greenville Electric Utility System Policy Regarding Disconnection for Non-Payment. Summer Spurlock.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This would be an ordinance amending a part of our policy, like you stated. JUICE has actually, they revised their policies actually in the meeting last week, and we found that we had a discrepancy. So, in theirs, previously, they had supervisor reserves the right to forego or postpone disconnection if the balance is below $20 or less. They voted to change that to $40 or less. Currently, our policy states the same exact, same, same exact language, except for it's $30 or less. So, in order to align with them, we would have to update our ordinance to align with their service policy for disconnection of utilities if the balance, we can forego that if the balance is less than $40. So, just aligning with them, so pretty simple.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Spurlock? If not, what is the pleasure of the council?
Lou DeProuve.
I second.
Motion is second, all vote please. And Ben votes yes, and I'll try to keep voting.
Al and Kristen.
Okay, it looks like we're closing the vote, and it passes with Ben's vote unanimously. The next item is item 7B, consideration in action of an ordinance authorizing purchase from Core and Main for meters and boxes to be purchased for meter installations. Press.
Good evening. Been a long evening already.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, this is an item that we already have budgeted for. Due to the amount of dollar amount, we had to bring it to council for approval. This just allows us to buy more order meter and boxes as we saddle.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Tompkins? If not, what is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion is second, all vote please. All in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously, six zero. Item 7C, consideration in action of an ordinance authorizing a unit price construction contract with Tricon Services for construction of Pin for GeoBond Street Project, Sale Street. This is a Sale Street.
Yes, sir, we just got the bids in Friday. We had a very competitive bidding. Tricon came in at, I think, $7.7 million. The range, the bids ranged from $7.7 to $9.5. They were the low bidder. They're the same company that just finished building Stonewall for us. They did an excellent job. They also just finished up the job at the emergency reconstruction of Ed Rutherford. They got that done in under 90 days. You'll see on the consent agenda the item for their final payment. So, I highly recommend them for this contract, get this job done for us.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Tompkins? Okay, one of the questions I have is, what is the, we voted $15 million, $15 million in bonds for this project, what's the balance of that? How much of that was left over?
I think after Stonewall, we were around 9.4, a little over nine.
So, this is almost $2 million. We're spending about $13 million total on these two streets, is that correct?
That's correct, so we're well within our budget for this.
Approximately, right?
Right.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Will we be required to use the remainder left over to repay the bonds? Because they were designated to those two streets, sir?
You need to direct that to Mr. Gray.
Well, we'd, we'd have to talk with bond council about that. I haven't been over those bonds in, in a while. I don't, and I don't know if I ever knew the answer to that question. I mean, those are done by bond council.
Can we check on that back with us then? Well, didn't we learn, though, that if we designated the streets, that we were unable to use the, any leftover money for anything?
See, I thought, other than, other than repaying the bonds, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was very specific, and when we did those, that they would have to be used on Stonewall or so.
Yeah, so we would. Only those, okay, so can you give us an opinion on that from the bond council for the next meeting, please?
Yeah, we will do that.
Is there any way this project can be rolled into the larger bond project? Like, this portion be bid with a larger portion to get a discount on a larger project in whole?
I think that's a good idea. I rather doubt you could do that, but, Mr. Ray, you opine on that?
Are you asking whether it would be legal to do that? Yes, it definitely would be legal. Because I'd hate to go out and buy one car, when if we were buying six cars, we'd save a discount price on a larger project. Because we had, we had some pretty low numbers budgeted with what was presented in the bond.
Right, I mean, this was, I mean, this bond was done before I got here, and I guess they came up just a cost estimate for the two streets. But, I think I'm like Summer, that bond was specifically for those two streets, so I think it would be prudent to go with bond council.
Well, I think that money would still go to Sale, but, or to this project, but it would, it would be more work for the company doing the job to get a more discounted rate. Are you asking, can we mix two bonds' worth of money into a single request for qualifications or proposals? I don't know. I doubt that that, that part of it would be legal. I mean, you could put together some sort of point system where if somebody bid on one, they would get additional points on the other. That's how the federal government does that type of mixing. This type of mixing, it's unlikely that we'd be able to, because each of these has to be approved through the Attorney General's office separately. They've already approved this one, they haven't gone through all the necessary steps on the secondary one. But, that's something that we could definitely get an opinion from bond council on. We have a really good bond council that's been with the city for more than a decade.
Perhaps before you were on the council, we were advised that these monies have to be specifically used for those streets.
Yeah.
And I know that's not your point, but it seems like, you're asking for a bulk buy, kind of like, yeah, I don't know. So, can we, can we get some clarification on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
But if, if we were to determine there was any additional work needed on Stonewall, say, on the areas that were previously repaired, could we use excess, any remainder on those?
My interpretation is, I'm not bond council, I don't want to speak, but we are able to use that bond money on Sale and Stonewall.
And Stonewall. And they were specifically from street to street as well, from what I remember.
Did they include the LED lighting in those? Did we ever do it on Stonewall?
They haven't come in yet. Where's Alicia? Alicia, she, she hadn't given me, we're waiting on her update, yeah.
Okay.
But, yes, they're ordered in there on, but, yeah, I'm pretty sure Stonewall and Sale were both from specific street to specific street, so we'd have to use it in that, in those parameters.
And that included the LED lighting and everything? But, I think Mr. Cruz's point is, there's some economy of scale that we could use. I don't know if there is or not, but he's asking something just a little different than that specificity, I believe.
Right, sure.
So.
Okay, are we, is Ben, is Ben hooked up? He's there. Okay, we're back in an open session under item 6C. What is the pleasure of the council regarding this issue?
Our motion, will you approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please vote. Yes, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Collins votes yes. Can you hear the motion? Okay, so the motion, well, I've voted about three times.
Don't feel bad.
Okay, and the motion passes with Ben's unanimously. Six oh. Okay, we'll move to the next item, which invites public testimony. First of all, an ordinance on action and ordinance enabling section A 20 point 03, point 002, code of ordinances to align Greenville Electric Utility System policy regarding disconnection for non-payment. Summer Spurlock.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This would be an ordinance amending a part of our policy, like you stated. JUICE is actually, they revised their policies actually in the meeting last week, and we found that we had a discrepancy. So in theirs, previously, they had supervisor reserves the right to forego or postpone disconnection if the balance is below $20 or less. They voted to change that to $40 or less. Currently, our policy states the same exact same, same exact language, except for it's $30 or less. So in order to align with them, we would have to update our ordinance to align with their service policy for disconnection of utilities. If the balance, we can forego that if the balance is less than $40. So just aligning with them. So pretty simple.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Spurlock? If not, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to approve.
I second.
Motion is second. All vote please. And Ben votes yes, and I'll try to keep voting.
Al and Kristen.
Okay, it looks like we're closing the vote, and it passes with Ben's vote unanimously. The next item is item 7B, consideration action of an ordinance authorizing purchase from Core and Main for meters and boxes to be purchased for meter installations. Press.
Good evening. Been a long evening already.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, this is an item that we already have budgeted for. Due to the amount of dollar amount, we had to bring it to council for approval. This just allows us to buy more order meter and boxes as we settle.
Okay, is there any questions for Mr. Tompkins? If not, what is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion is second. All vote please. All in favor? Okay, it passes unanimously, six zero. Item 7C, consideration in action of an ordinance authorizing a unit price construction contract with Tricon Services for construction of Penn for GeoBond Street Project, Sale Street. This is a Sale Street.
Yes, sir, we just got the bids in Friday. We had a very competitive bidding. Tricon came in at, I think, $7.7 million. The range, the bids ranged from 7.7 to 9.5. They were the low bidder. They're the same company that just finished building Stonewall for us. They did an excellent job. They also just finished up the job at the emergency reconstruction of Ed Rutherford. They got that done in under 90 days. You'll see on the consent agenda the item for their final payment. So I highly recommend them for this contract, get this job done for us.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Tompkins? Okay, one of the questions I have is, what is the, we voted $15 million, $15 million in bonds for this project. What's the balance of that? How much of that was left over?
I think after Stonewall, we were around 9.4, a little over nine.
So this is almost $2 million. We're spending about $13 million total on these two streets. Is that correct?
That's correct. So we're well within our budget for that.
Approximately, right?
Right.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Will we be required to use the remainder left over to repay the bonds because they were designated to those two streets?
You need to direct that to Mr. Gray.
Well, we'd, we have to talk with bond counsel about that. I haven't been over those bonds in, in a while. I don't, and I don't know if I ever knew the answer to that question. I mean, those are.
Could we check on that back to us then?
Well, didn't we learn, though, that if we designated the streets, that we were unable to use the, any leftover money for anything?
See, I thought, other than, other than repaying the bonds. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was very specific, and when we did those, that they would have to be used on Stonewall or so.
Yeah, so we would.
Only those. Okay, so can you give us an opinion on that from the bond counsel for the next meeting, please?
Yeah, we will do that.
Is there any way this project can be rolled into the larger bond project? Like, this portion be bid with a larger portion to get a discount on a larger project in whole?
I think that's a good idea. I rather doubt you could do that, but Mr. Ray, you opine on that?
Are you asking whether it would be legal to do that? Yeah. Yes, it definitely would be legal. Because I'd hate to go out and buy one car when if we were buying six cars, we'd save a discount price on a larger project. Because we had, we had some pretty low numbers budgeted with what was presented in the bond.
Right, I mean, this was, I mean, this bond was done before I got here, and I guess they came up just a cost estimate for the two streets. But I think I'm like Summer, that bond was specifically for those two streets. So I think it would be prudent to go with bond counsel.
Well, I think that money would still go to Sale, but, or to this project, but it would, it would be more work for the company doing the job to get a more discounted rate. Oh, you're asking, can we mix two bonds worth of money into a single request for qualifications or proposals? Yeah. I don't know. I doubt that that, that part of it would be legal. I mean, you could put together some sort of point system where if somebody bid on one, they would get additional points on the other. That's how the federal government does that type of mixing. This type of mixing, it's unlikely that we'd be able to, because each of these has to be approved through the Attorney General's office separately. They've already approved this one. They haven't gone through all the necessary steps on the secondary one. But that's something that we could definitely get an opinion from bond counsel on. We have a really good bond counsel that's been with the city for more than a decade.
Perhaps before you were on the council, we were advised that these monies have to be specifically used for those streets.
Yeah.
And I know that's not your point, but it seems like, you're asking for a bulk buy, kind of like, yeah, I don't know. So can we, can we get some clarification on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins.
But if we were to determine there was any additional work needed on Stonewall, say, on the areas that were previously repaired, could we use excess, any remainder on those?
My interpretation is, I'm not bond counsel, I don't want to speak, but we are able to use that bond money on Sale and.
And Stonewall.
And they were specifically from street to street as well, from what I remember.
Did they include the LED lighting in those? Did we ever do it on Stonewall?
They haven't come in yet. Where's Alicia? Alicia, she hadn't given me, we're waiting on her update, yeah. But yes, they're ordered in there on, but yeah, I'm pretty sure Stonewall and Sale were both from specific street to specific street, so we'd have to use it in that, in those parameters.
But I think Mr. Cruz's point is there's some economy of scale that we could use. I don't know if there is or not, but he's asking something just a little different than that specificity, I believe.
Right, sure.
Yeah, I believe that the different, I mean, the answer in that is going to come down to the differing scopes of those two, because one was very specific and one was not.
Correct.
We should be able to get a quick answer on that by the time we have the next meeting.
And you also have to think about the timing as well. I mean, we're ready to move forward with this one right now. We might not be ready to move forward with the $50 million or whatever.
Bundomania.
Yeah, so I mean, the timing issue would be.
Yeah, I don't want someone to drive on a substandard street any longer than they have to, but if this can help fix more substandard streets, then I'd rather have that happen.
I mean, I don't know if it'd fix more streets, but.
And just to let you know, what you're talking about, the contractor had locked in his prices, so as soon as he gets approval tonight, his prices will be locked in. So we're not seeing a significant increase in material costs right now.
What is the pleasure of the council regarding this?
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you moved to approve. Okay.
Beat you.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, there's a motion is second. All vote please. Okay, Mr. Collins votes yes, and it passes. Did you vote?
I just, I think that, I think we should try to get more than for.
Okay, you're, you're voting in opposition. Okay, okay, so it passes five to two. Right? Is that right?
Five to one.
Five to one, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Pardon me.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Resolutions, consider an action on a resolution approving or disapproving consent to inclusion in the City of Greenville ex-territorial jurisdiction within the proposed Hunt County Emergency Services District. Daniel Ray.
All right, there's a group of people who've gone together, 100 of them, and filed a petition in Hunt County to establish an emergency services district. Over the next couple of months, the county commissioners' court is going to meet in an open session that the community is invited to, to discuss this and what the potential parameters of it would be. But basically, what it is, is a cross-county group that will be a taxing body and that will provide some emergency services. And so the only issue before you tonight, well, and let me tell you, if you look at a map, there's basically the whole county with two big splotches missing, and those are the professional fire departments here in Greenville and in Commerce. And so there's a ring around Greenville, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, and one of the code sections basically requires that the City of Greenville, through the city council, either approve or deny the inclusion of the ETJ into the Emergency Services District. And basically, the argument for it was that they would get greater services. The argument against it is that they could potentially be double taxed on their property values. And like the neighborhood that was just approved, that would be, in that area, the ETJ is going to grow, the city limits are likely going to grow, because that's one of the ways that developers can get access to cheap, or in some cases, free utilities, is by allowing the city to annex. And so like that project tonight, they could potentially be paying city taxes once they're in the city, plus this 10%, which is the maximum of the ESD can charge. If, I'm sorry.
And previously, and previously, the city council voted to deny this request.
That's correct.
I believe in dissent in January, and they've asked us to, well, approve or disapprove this again. So that's the issue here.
That's correct.
And we previously did that. So is there a motion regarding this issue?
I move to disapprove consent to the inclusion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I second. Tim got it.
Okay, Mr. Cruz. All in favor, please vote. I need to know.
Carol, do you think you can call on your cell phone and then put your cell phone up to the microphone?
The motion to be clarified is what he needs.
I move to disapprove consent to the inclusion. City of Greenville, stay within the proposed Hunt County Emergency Services District, number one.
Did you?
He does, yes.
Okay, it passes. Well, we don't know yet. Okay, it passes unanimously. The city secretary, read the consent calendar, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Bea. I'm very sorry. Some of you weren't here. We discussed this earlier. I think the only person I received any suggestions regarding the goals and objectives was Mr. Atkins, and we implemented those in the goals and objectives. And I'd ask that all of you submit any other goals or objectives you may have, and we'd like, we need to finalize these and vote on the next meeting, if that's okay. So I'm entertaining a motion to delay this vote, or postpone this vote until the next meeting, which will be June 8th. Right? Is that right? Something like that.
I think it's June 8th.
Is it June 8th? I don't know what it is. Is, is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay. Motion to postpone, and a second.
What?
My second.
Did I put a make a proposal, make a suggestion?
I motion to postpone.
I thought we put a.
Okay, it is June 8th. Is it June 8th?
Okay, got you.
You need to put the right.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
We're checking on the date.
It's June 8th.
It is June 8th, okay.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I motion to postpone.
Okay, so there's been a motion to postpone this. Is there a second? I'm sorry.
We have Kristen and Kenneth already.
There's a motion is second. Please vote. And please submit your goals, if you have any, and objectives.
I got one, but.
And it passes unanimously. Carol, will you read the consent calendar, please?
City council meeting minutes from May 11th, campus and regular meeting on May 11th, ordinance authorizing final payment with Tricon Services for the emergency street repair of Roy Warren Parkway, a resolution adopting the 2021 Hunt County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan, and ordinance entering into agreement with Farmers Electric Cooperative, and to the extent required JUICE for the encroachment license agreement.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Kristen, did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, there's a motion is second. Please vote on the consent calendar. Item nine. Okay. Looks like it passed unanimously. City staff, council reports, April financials. How are you?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Always happy to have a nice full room to present to at the end of the meeting. This will be as of April 30th, 2021, 58% through the fiscal year. General fund, as of April 30th, revenues are at 20.3 million or 78% of expected collections. Expenditures are at 15.8 or 57% of budgeted expectations. Just as a reminder, the revenue figure is a little bit higher than we would normally see for this time of year because of the CARES Act funding that's sitting in that amount as well. Below, you can see the breakdown. Largest piece of revenue is our property tax, at about 8.4 million at this point. Largest portion of expenditures is public safety. Sales tax, this is year-to-date through April. Sales tax collections are up $450,000 or 9.38% compared to year-to-date, same time in 2020. Down at the bottom, you can see the remaining that we would need to collect to meet our target that we set for the year is about $3 million. Looking at just the city portion of the current period collection, so this is a little bit of a different piece of information than the previous side. This is just for the month of April versus a year-to-date number. And that number that we received was 532,000, which if you're just looking at the month of April, it's down 0.3% from just the month of April from the previous year. So that's money that we collected in February, reported in March, and then we actually received it in the month of April. Looking at the history of April sales tax, this is showing the net payment received by the city. So you can see it's pretty close to flat. Again, this is just looking at the month of April, not the year-to-date total, which is why you don't see the increase in this chart. Water and sewer fund revenues through April are 8.1 million percent, not 8.1, it's late, I'm sorry, $8.1 million or 56% of budgeted expectations, which is good. You're 50, 58% through the year. You would want to see that aligning pretty closely, so that's right on track. Hotel motel occupancy tax, so at this point, we're pretty much exactly a year out from the start of the pandemic. So this is where we start to get a really good picture of that trend. So you can see the green and the blue lines are our normal years, and then that red line is pandemic year. So we're getting right back on track to where we were before the pandemic. Comparing April to April of last year, we're up 52%, so that's a good sign. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
I have a question for the city manager, perhaps city secretary. All of these presentations that we've had on the budget and the regular presentation that we just received, are those any way, I know some of those are completed just maybe prior to the meeting, but could they be downloaded for the city council members so we won't have to look around and read? We can read them right off our iPad. Would that be, is that something we could consider?
Yes, certainly. We'll put them in your Dropbox, and you should be able to see them.
I think it would be helpful.
Just so the slides match, so the slides match what we have in our packet.
Yeah.
Because sometimes they have the slides, but they don't match.
Well, sometimes we don't, I don't think we get these slides. Right, that's all I'm saying. So if you could do that, it'd be helpful, and then we could use those to refer to as we look, go through the budget. Is that okay? Okay, I have a brief report regarding street improvements. First of all, I want to talk about Roy Warren Extension, if you'll, if you will. I think the design for that, all these, all these major core streets require, have underlying utilities and they require design time. That's why it's taken so long. Feel like I'm preaching to Mr. Evans. You've heard this about 10 times, right? Anyway, all of them have underlying utilities, and they require design before we can start on construction. And that's been the delay, that was the delay in Stonewall Street. It's the delay in Sale Street that we finally approved tonight. And it is also the delay in construction of Roy Warren Extension. And so I think we have about five or six months left of design for that, and we, once we finish that, we'll be getting, we'll have construction completed in 12 months, I'm told. So that's the latest status of that. So that, do you have anything to add to that, Summer? Did I summarize that correctly?
No, that's correct, for Roy Warren.
Okay, okay. And then with regard to the street bonds, I want to just mention that one of the challenges that, one of the concerns that I have and members of the Transportation Committee have is that interest rates will run away from us. We recently sold some local bonds for less than a percent and a half, and we're certainly hopeful the Transportation Committee met. We're certainly, so our idea is to speed up the usage of these bonds and the sale of these bonds, so we can take advantage of the low interest rates. And so the original plan for these street bonds was to complete that, complete those, the utilization of that money in about three and a half years. And we've asked the staff to compress that, and recently, this week, in fact, or when was it? I don't know when it was. We met, and the staff, very proud of the staff. They came back and they submitted a plan for using and completing this project in two years. So we'll be, we're going to be very busy. There's some things we have to do that we'll hear about, head or about soon. There are a number of streets, some of them are core streets that I mentioned will require redesign. We can't start on those immediately, but a lot of those are mill and overlay, and we can start on as many of those as we can. We've authorized a unit price contract to do that, and so we're very optimistic that we're going to be able to capture the interest rates that we hoped we would get, and importantly, meet the pledge that we made to our citizens that we'd use this $2 million a year to amortize these bonds. So I want to thank the staff for that. I don't know if Kristen or Al would like to say anymore about it. They serve on the Transportation Committee, but I wanted to announce that. People are asking about the street bonds and what we did, and that's, that's a summary, I guess.
I just second your comments and share my thanks with the staff for all their hard work.
Yeah, I, the same. This process has been long and warranted, but I'm grateful and thankful for the numbers we have. Just want to reassure everybody that we, we hear you, we're listening, we see what's going on, we see what needs to be done, and just trust us to get this job done. You know what, trust us to get this done how you want it to get done. We're working on it.
And you'll hear more about it, perhaps the next meeting, I think we'll be approving. Will we be approving some stuff for this at the next meeting, Press or Summer? I believe we will, right? Okay, so I wanted to give you an update. Okay, city council discussion for proposed agenda items. Are there any, any, any discussion or proposed agenda items?
For future meetings?
Yes.
I would like to continue to talk over the reservoirs. I would like to continue that conversation.
Okay, any other issues? Okay, board and commission minutes, you have those, and at this time, we will go into executive session under section 551.071, paragraphs one and two. And we don't anticipate a vote coming out of that meeting, for those of you who are present. You don't have anything?
No, we already discussed everything.
Okay, we did, that's right. Okay, I'm very sorry. Sorry, we're not going into executive session. You want to stay a while, James, you can.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you very much for coming tonight, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Aw, man. Aw, man.